May have felt actually opposed to the idea of organized collection without even having any awareness of what they were actually spending on trash and what any of those additional fees might be. So, methodologically, this is not a scientific data set. There was not a randomized sampling. It was not corrected for demographics or geography or anything like that. So, this is important in terms of taking everything with a grain of salt. However, these are all actual bills of actual Maplewood residents. And so, you know, you can go to any individual person and tell them, “Well, you’re a statistical anomaly, and so I’m going to ignore you if you don’t like what their data is,” or something. But I don’t think that that’s the right approach either. But we just have to take this into a grain of salt in terms of going too far in generalizing about percentages and numbers and so forth, and we have to realize that limitation. And obviously, this is something that I did in my own time and so, and at the, you know, forbearance of residents who are willing to give me copies of their bills. And so, it doesn’t have, you know, there wasn’t the ability to go out there and do a much more scientific type of survey. Having said that, I think that I wound up putting together a pretty good sample of, since it’s 55 different examples, in some cases, a couple are actually townhomes that represent multiple, you know, 13 or plus people and what they’re paying. It’s from people all over the city. Again, not, you know, scientifically sampled to be representative of the city, but I certainly have people from the far south leg, all the way up to the northeast and the far west corners of the city, and all points in between. In terms of haulers, I was able to get copies of seven of the basic eight trash hauling companies that serve Maplewood. There is another one, another trash hauling company, a ninth, that only serves in the Beaver Lake area, and I didn’t get any copies of their bills. My understanding is that those are essentially townhome type, or homeowners associations with a contract with that hauler. So, they’re kind of outside of the rest. You’ll note in the report, I did not name any of the haulers. I just identified them by a letter. And the reason for that is that the purpose here is not to be naming names or calling people out. It’s to, it’s useful to know when you have haulers that are the same hauler and when they’re talking about different customers. But the purpose here is not to be beginning some kind of police action or anything of that. It’s for us to have information in understanding how the current system actually works in practice. And in the future, when we get to that point in this process, to be able to say, “Here is what it really is like today on the ground, not just in things that are filed with the city, but actually on people’s bills and in their pocketbooks, and here is how it compares with an actual contract that we would be considering signing.” And I think that it’ll be very important for us to have that kind of information. As far as the current system, I think that it reveals effects that are not in agreement with the intent of our ordinance. The most obvious one was that the ordinance says you’re supposed to report the rates, and what we find, as you can see in the report, is that they range from about 30% under the rates reported to the city. Again, that’s what I would have expected, that somebody bargain shopping a neighborhood that goes together with their neighbors to get a lower rate would get something better than the published rate. That wasn’t a surprise. But on the other end, we had someone who was paying about 135% more than the rates reported to the city. And again, this has been, you know, I looked at those bills and I factored out that it does not include any special one-time charges for yard waste pickup or any things like that. That’s, that was just the month, monthly rate being charged to this person in terms of hauler fees. As I discussed at the report, at the presentation in April, on some hauler bills, a very big factor is these extra charges that are identified as sometimes just a fuel surcharge, or an environmental surcharge, or an administrative fee. And sometimes, typically, you either have just a fuel surcharge, or some haulers have a fuel and environmental combined surcharge, and sometimes there’s also an administrative fee. These fees are not necessarily applied consistently. You sometimes will find one person of a hauler that’s not being given a fuel surcharge, or one person is getting a paper bill and is being charged an administrative fee per bill, and another customer is not, and so forth. And some of this may just be what happens in terms of, you know, if somebody has been lured as a customer with a, an offer, and they just haven’t had the chance yet to start working those charges onto their bill, or they may have negotiated it in some way by comparing the rates of another hauler that they were aware of to their current hauler and what have you. So, that’s one issue, is that it’s very clear that the rates being charged don’t match up with the rates that are reported to the city. One element of that in particular is that haulers have not historically updated the city when they changed rates. And one of the things that is particularly troublesome about this is that it appears that haulers have a tendency to raise their rates sometime in the first quarter of the year, just from what I’ve seen on these various bills, a couple months after they’ve reported their rates to the city. And so, our cycle of getting rate information automatically becomes out of date, at least as far as what current people are paying. And then, if they call up their hauler, they’re like, “Oh, well, there was a rate increase back in February or March.” But haulers were not updating us about those rates. Now, in comparison, I could be wrong about this, but I have the impression that cities with organized collection tend to set their rates at the end of the year, at the same time that, you know, as we do with all of our different fees and, you know, levy amounts and taxes for different city services, fee-based things for building permits, et cetera. And so, it also means that when people like us are comparing our system to, say, our neighbors in White Bear Lake, we’re using last year’s rates from our haulers and comparing them to this year’s rates under an organized system. And in some years, that difference can actually be pretty startling. One artifact in this data is that one of our haulers, for the first time in memory of staff this year, did actually update us on their rates partway through the year, as we were having this conversation about that. And so, they had made a 50 cent increase in each one of their rate categories. But, for the purposes of this report, I went with what was up until about the middle of the year, their reported rates, even though they had been implementing those rate increases for several months before they got around to reporting it. And our ordinance requires them to report rate increases in advance. So, I think that that’s a legitimate way to be looking at this spreadsheet. Anyone who really wants to pick nits with all of the different details, I did put every one of these bills online in a publicly readable directory on my personal website with the private information redacted, so that it’s possible to go in and see exactly what, how these bills look and what they have and different, how they describe the information, see if you can understand, if you are a customer of that hauler, and figure out what those different charges meant and where they came from. I did a couple of, once you have all this data together, there are a lot of different ways you can slice and dice it to find interesting information. How does one hauler’s rates compare for the same size of container among different customers, et cetera? I kind of kept it pretty basic in this report because it could have gone on for many, many, many pages doing that kind of numerical fun. But, it does, I did provide, for instance, a chart for each one of the basic container sizes. And you’ll find on these charts, the 30, 60, and 90, that, on average, it’s significantly higher than the average rates that are reported to the city. And it’s really a very wide range, for example, on 30 gallon, from a little bit under $13 a month, including fees and surcharges, to a top level of about $24 a month. That’s the kind of difference between what people are actually paying. And again, this is apples-to-apples service-wise, keeping apart any sort of, you know, yard waste, additional bags, anything like that that might have appeared on bills. And then, I have similar comparisons for the other rate sizes. Something that I wanted to call attention to, talking about the rate increases, was that there were a couple of customers that gave me multiple bills over a period of time. And one in particular was helpful in that they gave me four years running. And so, on page six of my report, or 23 out of 33, I entered in that information because this gives us an idea of, you know, again, people sort of have an assumption that, well, you know, things are sort of generally happening at the marketplace, and the free market is working to keep prices low, and, and there’s a reason for, you know, fuel surcharges and stuff like that. So, basically, what I found, and this is a good example hauler to use because as far as I can tell, they tend to be very consistent in what they’re charging one customer and another. And I think it’s probably notable, too, that I believe this hauler was aggressively growing market share in Maplewood over this period in time. And so, what you can see is that they begin at an extremely low rate back in 2008 of $9.55 with no extra surcharges, $9.55 a month for a 30-gallon container. The next year, in 2009, they jumped, they jumped up from $9.55 to $10.55, but they also introduced a fuel surcharge of 65 cents a month. And so, that, taken together, and again, you know, fuel surcharge, it’s, they pay tax on it just like any other hauler charge. Taken together, that adds up to over 17% in a one-year increase in that hauler. The next year, they bumped up the fuel surcharge 20 cents, they bumped up their base rate 50 cents, and once again, that adds up to a 15.2% increase in 2010 over 29. And then, this year, their increase was just 50 cents apiece. As I mentioned, they are the ones who updated us mid-year on their rates, which is only a 3.9% increase. It may be coincidence, but I find it very interesting that after we began talking about organized trash collection, they went from 15, 17% annual rate increases to a 4% increase. It could be that, just in their business strategy, that’s how it was working out, that they had gotten to the point where they’d picked up as much market share as they could just on the basis of people attracted to low prices. And now, the strategy was to raise the prices to the rest of the market so as to maximize profit, because you get to that point where you have people that just don’t care about their trash bill, and they’re, they’re not going to respond even if you offer them, you know, 80% off. And then, you just want to, you know, make hay while the sun shines and pocket as much cash as you can while you can. So, an argument might be made that there must be something driving those fees, especially things like fuel surcharges. And so, on the next page of the report, page seven, I gave you for comparison what was happening with inflation in the Consumer Price Index and also with diesel fuel expenses. So, when they introduced that big fuel surcharge out of the blue, well, that wasn’t entirely out of the blue because, in fact, there had been a huge jump the previous year in diesel fuel of almost 32%. I think we probably remember discussions back then and how happy we were as a city to have landed ourselves a futures contract that protected us from a lot of that cost on our, our vehicles here. The following year, as the economic slowdown was having its impact, I guess, they actually increased their fuel surcharge by 20 cents a month, or, I guess that would be about 31%. But the diesel fuel prices dropped, on average, that year by 35%. So, just a complete disconnect between what was happening. The next year, their fuel surcharge has remained level, diesel prices rebounded 20%. So, this, to me, just demonstrates that the fuel surcharge is a way to put something on there without getting a lot of customer resistance, because a lot of people are doing it. But it does not necessarily, certainly across haulers, have any correlation to what necessarily is happening in the fuel costs. Another thing that I wanted to call attention to, in terms of compliance with our current ordinance, is that we do have a requirement for volume-based pricing. The ordinance says that, you know, first of all, you’re supposed to have an option for people that have less than 30 gallons a week in need, which not all of our haulers do. But the other thing is that you’re supposed to have rates where you pay more for larger containers, so that you incentivize waste reduction. I can, and do in the report, give you examples where with the very same hauler, there are three customers, the one who pays the most has the smallest container, and the one who pays the least has the largest container. And so, it’s clear to me that that part of our ordinance isn’t working under the current system. And I can understand why that happens, because what I would bet happens, based on especially a couple conversations with the residents, is that somebody calls up the hauler and says, “Look, I don’t need such a big container, and I want to save money, and my neighbor’s paying less for theirs, and they, and they have a smaller size.” And the hauler responds by saying, “Well, we’ll match that price, but, you know, let’s, let’s just have you keep the, the big container, you’ll have it for when you need it. You know, if you have friends over some weekend, or, or a lot of wrapping paper after the holidays.” And then, that’s there. And so, perhaps, you know, the hauler figures it’s not going to make a big difference on the volume and what their actual tipping fees are. But then, it also perhaps doesn’t serve that purpose if we really want people to have smaller containers, to make them conscious of a need to throw away less and to recycle more. So, that’s, again, something that, with respect to how it works today in the system, we wind up with the exact opposite outcome of what our ordinance intends. I had a couple of other, just tidbits of examples of things like yard waste and finance charges, extra bags, bulky items. Some of this will be more useful when we’re comparing it to a potential organized contract system to, for some of those less common charges that we also are going to have to have covered. And, and then, I also have some recommendations there, talking about some of the things that we’ve talked about tonight in terms of having some graduated penalties short of just revoking a license. We’d need to ask the, the city attorney if that’s something possible to us, and whether, if we are going to continue with the current system, if we should amend the reporting requirements to make it involve all charges, so that there’s not an ability to slip things off into different line item titles as a way to avoid reporting them and making it harder for consumers to comparison shop between one alternative and another if we give them that information. So, with that, I think I will stand for any questions that I may have on the council or from staff, and see where we are.
Jim?
I just have one. Thank you for the report. I took some time today, in fact, to look through it. And again, algebra is not my strong point, and I’m glad you’re better at numbers than you are. So, like, really, one of the things that we’ve heard, for those that came in attendance, John, and those that have subsequently written the city, and those that have really taken a stance against organized hauling is, they don’t care. With regards to the price of their trash, they don’t care, right? They’d be willing to pay $2 more a month, or $2 less a month, or $5 more. The price is inconsequential to, to them as much as the conversation about why should a municipality or a governing body tell them who and when and why and where, right? Less government. That’s the biggest rebuttal that we’ve faced. And the numbers that you say are spot-on, I totally understand the financial components to the, to the argument, and I think there’s a value to that. But the value, and I’m asking this as a question, I legitimately mean this to hear your thoughts on this, because that’s the thing that I, that I’m really struggling with. If they don’t care, why should we care, right? I mean, in other words, generally, people are willing to pay for more, or at a different rate, because they can, or they should have that choice, right? You go to this gas station, it’s 3 cents more a gallon than this one because that’s the gas station you like to go to. With regards to the financial findings that you, you have in the report, how would you respond to that general statement, or that general feedback from the constituencies? And I mean that just flat-out honestly.
Well, I think a couple of responses. One is, if, if we decide as a matter of policy as a city that we don’t care how much money is being wasted on excessive trash charges, then we might, for example, not want to spend any of the money on enforcement and get rid of the requirement, and just post a notice that says, “You’re on your own, it’s the Wild West, nobody’s watching your back.” You know, don’t imagine that anybody is watching your back. Because, a lot of the, a lot of times, I think that the charges are set in a way that is, I think, intense, intentionally deceptive. You know, there, there’s a fair number of people that, that they’ll, they’ll tell you that they’re angry about, about the, the extra government fees that are on there, and they mean, for instance, an environmental fee or, or environmental surcharge, which they think is paying for recycling or something. And they don’t realize that it’s just the hauler just reaching back into their pocket for another handful of change, because they can. They just, you know, put on a, I don’t know, a, a blue sleeve or something, so it looks like it’s a, some agent of the government doing it. So, if, if, if we really don’t care at all about rates, we probably shouldn’t even waste any time in asking for it in our licensing process. And we probably, if anything, should just have a bigger caveat, M-TOR sign out there, telling people, “Buyer beware, and good luck to you.” On the other hand, one of the problems that I have with that is that I’ve found that a lot of times, people have that assumption partly because they’ve never looked at what they’re paying very closely. They haven’t worked out the fact that they could buy an HDTV with the money that they might save, each year, a new one. I mean, you’ve got people who are paying, you know, hundreds of dollars a year more than what their hauler tells the city their rate is. And remember, when you look at the rate differences, it’s not just that rate, but that increased rate, you know, if you’re paying 24 bucks in Maplewood for a 30-gallon bin, and in White Bear Lake, they’re paying 12-something, and in White Bear Lake, that includes their recycling fee. So, really, you should make that somewhere under $10 a month that they’re paying in White Bear Lake, and I, I think I might be high on what, what the White Bear Lake number is, just pulling it off the top of my head. 14 bucks a month times 12, 12 months a year, $144 a year. Oh, and you’re paying 37.75% tax on that extra amount, too, that you wouldn’t need to be paying. And, again, you know, maybe, maybe somebody is like, “Well, I’m in the kind of income and wealth category where I just don’t care about throwing a few hundred bucks around extra to satisfy my ideological predilections.” But you’re not just doing that for yourself. It’s actually everybody else in the city. You’re, you’re saying that, that the person, “My right to choose and to keep government out of this is so important that I want the woman on the pension down the street, barely scraping by on social security, who is forced by the same law to have to have that same 30-gallon service whether she needs it or not every week, under the law, I want her to pay enough extra that she can’t feed her cat this year.” And, you know, then I realize that there are some people that that’s where they’re, I’m at, Alan’s looking at me funny, like, he’s like, “Have you priced cat food lately? No, I haven’t. But, you know, and maybe for some people, that’s, that’s where they’re at, and they, they think that we, we should just not get involved in this kind of discussion at all, and it’s heretical to even discuss it. But I, I think the, the amounts of money that we have a decent prospect of saving for the residents of this city are meaningful. And if they’re not meaningful, then anybody that gripes to us about the tax levy issues we’re going to talk about in terms of funding the community center, well, we can say, “Hey, it’s only a few hundred thousand dollars, we could do extra, we could put on a new roof this year if, if it’s inconsequential, and we only care about, you know, satisfying our need to have a shiny community center, and everybody else can pay for it.” But, you know, I think in reality, we, we’re trying to always balance these different interests of our different residents, and not everybody is in the position where they have, where they, where it’s really just a matter of luxury, you know, just like buying a sixth espresso that week at an overpriced coffee shop.
Any other questions at the moment? Is this a button that you just pushed? Mr. Nephew has something to say.
This was just a couple of, of potential ordinance amendments to put out there. One is an idea of the ordinance could be amended to allow every other week pickup. We’ve heard in, certainly some haulers, in our discussion of, of the RFP processes that’s developed in the working group, expressed some concerns about the technical feasibility of smaller-than-30-gallon containers. And an alternative that could be allowed, that’s not currently allowed, would be to have customers select a 30-gallon every other week option for people that have less trash generation and lower needs. So, I thought I’d put that out there as one potential amendment to the existing ordinance and existing system. Another is, we’ve had conversations about the responsible alternative, environmentally responsible alternative disposal method, whether it’s somebody that wants to take their trash directly to a pay dump, or if somebody has a dumpster at work, or if somebody really, you know, they compost and recycle down to the point where they have one bag of trash a month that they take to the pay dump or whatever, that we should amend the ordinance to allow for that type of thing. And again, that’s something allowed to us under state law. We’ve talked about doing it as part of the potential organized collection process, but we could also consider it if we chose not to move ahead with that. And then, finally, I think that I, I’m interested in the idea of graduated penalties of different types, and I wonder if that would have any, what would happen if they were financial penalties, if that could go into the funding of the cost of enforcement and things like that? I don’t know the ins and outs of that, but I would toss that out there as a, as an idea worth discussing as well. And then, some of those things could be tied in with the costs. And obviously, you know, licensing fees and so forth have to rise to a level that is more related to what it costs to, to enforce the license one way or another. Thanks.
Yes, Kathy?
Thanks. I know you did. Yeah, also in response to Jim’s question, because I’ve had some people ask me, and my response always is, “I don’t represent just you.” So, if you have an issue of any kind, and you have, let’s be reasonable, 30 different responses, in effect, there are, could be as many as 10,000 different responses, if you look at how many residents we have, we still have to balance out service to everyone, whether it’s a response to a question or a service that’s provided. It’s everybody. And that weighs heavily on all of us, and I could tell you, weighs heavily on me for a lot of decisions, this one included. It’s not just what an individual wants, it’s about the needs of an entire community. That’s a big piece. And as I said before, when we’re charged with the health of the community, this one plays big. That’s all there is to it. It’s not, you can’t compare it to, oh, let me see, I’ve had it compared to UPS trucks, I’ve had it compared to FedEx trucks, I’ve had it compared to, believe it or not, the epilepsy foundation picking something up in a neighborhood. Seriously? And then, there’s the old long-lived school bus argument. It’s like, okay, really? I don’t think so. I mean, if you’re going to argue, you need to argue logically, and school buses isn’t one of the logical arguments. Now, if you want to talk to the school district about if only three kids are on a bus and it holds 72 people, it bugs you, you can talk to them about that, but that isn’t underneath our regulation. It has nothing to do with our ability to assist with the health of the community, that’s the school district’s issue. We could make them run 20-person buses, I suppose, but I think there’d be a lot of clamoring about the cost of that. This is about responsibility to a whole community and responsibility environmentally, and in the process, possibly being more efficient, and, oh, no, saving some money. Those are the four big ones to me. Well, that’s the answer to that question, if somebody asked me.
So, I would just comment that I agreed with several things that Mr. Nephew said having to do with if we were going to keep the subscription system, that we, we need to, to modernize it so that we’re actually enforcing it. And certainly, the items that he had listed having to do with providing some other alternatives were things I had not thought about. I thought about them with the organized system, but not adapting them into this. And then, also, John made a comment earlier, which, as I read through initially, I was thinking that, well, certainly one way that we could attempt to reach the goal of having some less traffic on the streets and whatnot would be to limit the licenses. But it didn’t particularly occur to me that in doing so, that we could create essentially a limited system where they would be more free to charge what it is that they want, less competition. And so, that was, that was a good point, having to do with that. And, and so, so, you know, I, in reviewing the existing system, I certainly think that if we choose to stay with that, that it needs to be modernized, we need to update our license fees. I think that overall, we’ve been making an effort with all our license fees to try to make them more realistic, so that we’re actually covering our costs. And so, we should do the same here, and, and then, it would be an opportunity to consider adding some. to stay with that, that it needs to be modernized, we need to update our license fees. I think that overall, we've been making an effort with all our license fees to try to make them more realistic, so that we're actually covering our costs. And so we should do the same here, and then it would be an opportunity to consider adding some additional things that would provide better service presumably for our citizens. Say that again? I don't know. You guys have anything you want to add to this conversation? You'd be good.
My name is Mike Burkepek. I'm the vice chairman of the Minnesota chapter of the NSWM, and I'm also with a company called Ace Solid Waste. We don't operate in Ramsey, we're a locally-owned hauler. We, excuse me, we don't operate in Maplewood, we, our office is in Ramsey. And we do mostly subscription service throughout the areas that we service, more on the west side of town, Anoka County. And, you know, I don't really have any comment, except that, you know, really more, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions. My only, I'll throw out two comments, because, you know, we've all talked about this a lot, and we don't want to try to do all that again, so I want to do my best to avoid that. Clearly, I think we all know it's a philosophical discussion about whether governments should do this, or whether people should do this on their own, and I think your discussions about the rates were very good. Councilmember nephew has done a good job. I mean, you can't, it's all there. I mean, and I don't necessarily have any comments that this is wrong or that is wrong. So really, it's a, to me, it's a philosophical discussion, and where you end up on that is really what's important. I will say, obviously, you know where I end up. I think we should stay with the subscription service. As a small business and other areas we operate, we think it works very well and provides value to residents. People can, you know, the whole freedom of choice thing, they can choose the type of hauler that they like to use, maybe the type of organizations that hauler supports. You know, we've had haulers in certain areas put out pink carts, you know, because of the breast cancer thing, and people like that. We have some youth community programs that we support, that our customers like, and there's other people who, you know, see haulers support sports teams, and maybe that's why they want to go with that hauler. So obviously, an open market allows them to make those choices, and philosophically, I think that's what they want to do. So to me, it's about what their value is and which side of the argument you're on. So speaking to my side of the argument, the ability to do something with ordinances, I think, is really there, you know, and really, the issue of rates, you know, the word, right, let's call it something, it's rate regulation of some sort. Now, we're not necessarily going to prescribe, you have to charge this, or you have to charge that, but I think that if you gave the hauling community a list of parameters that you wanted to meet, and then asked them to meet that, I think they would. Now, why hasn't it happened so far? You know, I didn't look into the details of this ordinance, but to me, I think, as we talk about that, what we've got to talk about is more like the max. And I don't know if the ordinance actually says that. Does the ordinance say, this is the max you can charge, or does it say, just give me your rates? You know, and they're subject to interpretation. Which way, what am I doing there? And then, you know, what's happened is what's happened. So I think there are really some ways to deal with that, whether it's service levels that you hear in the community, that people want every other week's service, and then also give people flexibility. I mean, you know, we've talked about business owners, we talk about older people maybe living alone, well, you know, they have a lot of help, right? And I suspect there's more than one or two whose son comes over and grabs that little white bag, because she can't even get it out to the curb, and takes it home. So those flexibilities are out there, and I do believe that, especially on that issue, I think we're ready and willing to work on that, and I think we can get something real done there, as it relates to trucks and axles and things like that. Again, we deal in other different communities, I think that's doable. You know, it's the enforcement side of it, you know, it's like every other ordinance, et cetera. I mean, you've got to put some detail so that people, there's not confusion, and I think on the rate thing is probably the best example, there's confusion, and whether you can suggest people took advantage of it or not took advantage of it, but it's not clear enough. So if you're going to go down that path of changing ordinances, I think there's an opportunity to bring some clarity, which will help. And then the last thing, and Councilmember nephew's done it, is, and obviously, you're doing it today, is there's a bully pulpit there, and, you know, if education, you think, is something of value to residents, well, then, at least from my perspective as a hauler, I'm willing to do that. I can tell you, and this is what I'll finish with, and then if you have any questions, let me know. What we do, and I think what some other haulers have done in this community, is if you want to grow your business, you know, grow your business, add employees, do all those things that businesses do, you have to do something different. And clearly, and it's been proven, you'll go into a community, offer introductory rates to try to get customers, you can't survive on those rates, and really, what you're doing, and we talk about it in our company all the time, is we get somebody in and then try to show them our value. And then when we give price increases, they say, well, that's reasonable, I'm okay with that. And then if our price gets too high, and I think that happened in Maplewood, I'll say, whether it was price or change in ownership of companies, when tennis first came in, people said, I'm not satisfied with that, and the market changed. I mean, that change in the market with tennis was pretty significant. I don't know exactly when that happened, but that was a pretty significant change. I mean, he was a cold start. He didn't come in and buy a company or anything like that, he just came in, and now he's got a pretty significant portion of the city. So I thought that was, that, to me, is what the opportunity is for businesses in this industry of subscription service. That's all I would have. If, serious, if anybody has questions about how the industry works, I'd be happy to answer that.
John has a question or a comment?
Thanks for coming out, and I particularly appreciate the perspective of you not being someone engaged in the ongoing, you know, competitive dogfight of market share in Maplewood and so forth, so you perhaps can speak with candor about a couple of things. One of the questions, and, you know, and especially when it comes to the discussion of rate reporting, as you did, I appreciate those comments about the kinds of parameters that you would find not onerous from your perspective as a hauler. And I do think that we would need the ordinance to be clearer in stating that the reported rates are reported maximum rates. From your perspective, if we went with the approach of asking that rates include all hauler fees, so everything outside of, you know, the solid waste management tax and the Ramsey County CEC, so that it would include any fuel surcharges or whatever, and then that those would have to be kept up to date, is that anything that would present, you know, logistical challenge or other problem from your perspective?
I really don't think so. I think the key thing there is the maximum, you know? And again, we're not going to figure it out today, but the detail really isn't as important, but what is that maximum rate? And, you know, the convenience, I'll say, of that is, when we, and this was new for us, you know, geez, 20 years ago, we never had taxes on our bills. And I remember, when we first started putting taxes on our bills, we were kind of confused on how that works, and we got through it, and that's part of the life today, but my point of that is, is your tax is calculated very specifically on a total. So that's the number you're driving for.
Yeah.
So to me, it's an easy number to identify, is it's that number, and it's not necessarily the breakdown, it's the number that's used to calculate the taxes.
I agree, and I think that's a very clear and logical number to use, and very, and there's already a system for finding it.
Exactly.
Without any argument, or if there is an argument, it's with some other legal authority that comes in and audits you.
Yeah, and they do.
And they can have fun with that.
Yeah, and they do.
On the general topic of the rate stuff, you used the phrase rate regulation, I'm not sure if that's, I mean, because rate reporting and rate regulation would be two different things, and so perhaps I was just to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding. Do you have a perception that it would be possible to establish rate regulation? Because the rate reporting would simply be, will you tell us what your maximum rate is? It wouldn't be the city dictating this is what your maximum rate can be, right?
Yeah, and maybe that's just a semantic word.
Okay.
You know, every time somebody would say, hey, here's some limits on what you can do from a rate perspective, you know, as a business, you get concerned about that.
Right.
Because that may hurt you, you know, obviously financially, but it may hurt you in how you're marketing your service, you know, because there are some haulers, for example, who charge a pretty, and you found this, pretty high environmental fee, and there's others that don't. So everybody markets their service a little bit different, so to me, maybe it's just semantics that, I wouldn't necessarily want you to tell me, hey, you can't do a fuel surcharge, but you can do this, that type of thing.
Right. And I guess I just want to be clear that I don't think that we have any ability to do rate regulation, which, my understanding, technically refers to such things as utilities, where there is a regulatory agency that reviews and approves rate changes and so forth. The maximum that was being reported under this scenario would only be the maximum as long as you say it's the maximum, and you would just be, as a licensee, you would just be agreeing to notify us that your maximum had changed, anytime that there was a change to it. And so, and one of the reasons that I think that's important is that anytime that there really is a rate regulated industry, there's a whole apparatus of decision-making and regulation that goes into everything that appears on those bills, making them so hard to read.
And I appreciate that, and I, you know, the thing that I'll also throw out at you is, this issue of rates that are reported to cities is not just a Maplewood problem, okay? It's a problem because I think, there's, different cities do it for different reasons. Some cities, we've heard they do it because, in case somebody calls, they want to be able to tell them a rate. Well, you know, in a competitive market where rates are changing, you know, that's kind of hard. So my point is, is it relates to the specifics of the ordinance, and not necessarily that word, well, let's make sure that it's something that is enforceable.
Yes.
You know?
And so that way, a resident would be able to call up and say, I'm being charged this, and they reported that their maximum rate is that, and so the city would then be able to apply a penalty.
But as it relates to the ordinance itself, you know, like, I agree, obviously, to implement rate regulation would be difficult, whatever you decide to implement, let's make sure it's enforceable, you know, because as a competitor, you know, I'm ready to comply, but if this guy over here doesn't comply, well, then, we're all cooked, so to speak. So we'll have to make sure that, if you decide to go down that path, that that's there. And I don't have any direct experience, because most cities in this area have more of a general requirement. There's nobody I know of that has a very specific requirement.
Yeah, you know, interestingly enough, the only other city I'm aware of in Ramsey County that publishes the reported rates is the city of Roseville, and they do have it on their website. And by odd coincidence, the only Maplewood hauler that I couldn't find any bills from, I have two examples of their bills in Roseville. And in Roseville, they are charging more than what they report as their rates to the city of Roseville. So I suspect that the same issue would be found throughout the metro, but it's rare, from what I've seen, it's rare for cities to publicize the reported information. A resident would have to go and make an effort to submit a data practices request to get copies of those filings and so forth, and it would be pretty onerous, and probably, they would have an easier time just calling the haulers and asking, what's your best rate right now, rather than doing that. The one other question that I wanted to ask you was, you know, related to all this, in that, one of the things we've talked about is the notion of incremental or graduated smaller penalties, short of license revocation, as ways to slap wrists rather than, you know, summary executions when somebody violates some term of the ordinance among haulers. Do you have any experience with anything other than just the only punishment is removing your license? And do you have any thoughts on that idea?
I don't have any experience with that. It seems to me, if a city is going to be serious about doing this type of thing, they have, as I said earlier, they have the bully pulpit, and I think that that might be the most effective way, is, and I don't know, again, I don't know if you can do this, but if somebody's, if you send a letter to somebody that they're violating the city ordinance, is that public information? And use that vehicle as an effective way, because again, we're in a competitive market, and if we get a bad reputation, we're going to lose customers, and, you know, it happens. I mean, even as hard as we try, we lose customers because somebody doesn't like something we did. And we gain customers because some other hauler doesn't like something they did. So I don't know about the, if the graduated stuff would be too complicated, it sounds like it might get too complicated, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
I would just comment that it seems to me that, for some reason, your industry has a very fickle set of customers. You know, I've talked to some people who have changed their trash hauler four times in the last two years.
In your life.
And, you know, well, they're not giving me the service I want. What does that mean? What is it they're not giving you? Is your trash not going away when you put it out there? And they might say, well, you know, it was, I went out one day, and there was some garbage alongside the curb, that they assumed fell out the truck in the process, or something like that. And, I mean, I think there has certainly been a couple of times over the years when I've gone out and there's been some garbage out there. I mean, my normal habit in my yard is to pick up any garbage that's along my street. It happens every day, you know, that somebody goes by and rifles a pop can or something out the window, and so, so anyway. But for me to think that the vast majority of people would consider that, well, I'm going to change trash haulers because of this, it just, but there are, you know, I've heard it time and time again, that people readily change their hauler for some reason, and it's never, it has not been communicated to me very clearly, exactly what it is that they're looking for, that they're not getting. And when they have given an explanation, a lot of times, it seems like, for things that, it seems to me, would happen all the time, whether you've got a covered wagon or not, occasionally, something's going to fall out, or whatever.
It's how you drive your horses.
I also had one of the haulers tell me that they, the big thing for them is they went around, and I don't know, once a year or something, they have sent out some truck, and they clean out your barrel.
Right.
Well, I guess if that's been happening, I've never known that, never noticed it looking any different than it normally does.
Right. You know, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, we, you know, obviously, we're advocate for our business, and, you know, we work really hard to make it a personal service. I know it's just garbage, but we work really hard to make it a personal service and try to deal with whatever somebody needs. And, you know, from our perspective, there are a lot of, there's a lot of similarities between people, but there's a lot of differences between people on, you know, some people don't get too upset when their garbage can gets put back with the lid open, others want it lid closed, and all these types of things, and it's out there all the time. One of the things that is the best, and again, we believe, obviously, it's the competitive market, if somebody has a problem, we're very, very responsive. I'll just tell you two quick, really quick stories. One is my squirrel story. I had a guy in my office, and he said squirrels ate through my lid, jumped out, and he almost killed me, and it was easy, they just called me up, and we switched it. It was just that simple. We just took care of it. And then just today, I was walking out with one of my drivers, and he, we just got an email from a customer who, the lady was taking her husband's lawnmower to the repair shop, and she didn't tie it down properly, she was on the side of the road crying. And he stopped, this is in Moundsview, helped her tie it down, and relieved all those problems. And by the time he got in, we got an email from her thanking us, obviously, and she's in Oak Grove, she lives in Oak Grove, and, you know, we just earned a customer for life. And obviously, we're pretty proud of that. So those are the kind of things that we work on and we get jazzed about in our business. But thank you for allowing me to answer a couple of questions. Are there any others?
You're not quite done yet.
Okay.
Kathy?
I do appreciate, as John said, that you would come and listen, and also be willing to answer questions. And I appreciate your comments on, do you think your business can, not your personal business, but the business that you're in, difference, can respond? And I guess I have two things to say. Number one, pre-1997, I might have believed that. In 1997, this particular list, which I know you don't deliver here, but you've seen the list, because you've been sitting here, of the things that they wanted, the highlights of what the agreement was in 1997 with the haulers, with so-called restrictions on an open hauling system, has, if I'm in a kind mood, failed miserably because we didn't have some out there, somebody out there with the whistle and the badge and the large sledge. And I've said it before, and I'll say it to you, I would like to know if you have any great ideas on how, if we would move to that side of the equation, which is rewriting our ordinance and highlighting what we expect, and and highlighting what we expect and not having to have a garbage cop in every neighborhood, how we would expect that the haulers might, through an organization like yours possibly, live up to their side of the equation this time? Because the track record is, I'll be nice, miserable. And the expectations of the community are different from door to door, I realize. But I go back to the whole public health piece and the fact, fact that other cities have done what we're investigating. And those who haven't have sort of rolled over and said, fine. And I would like to know if there's a middle road where instead of rolling over and saying, fine, if we still say these things are important as part of the service in our community, how do we get that?
Well, councilmember, I think, you know, obviously, we all can't turn back the hands of time. What happened is what happened. I, I think that, and I, because I've been involved for a long time and actually in, with a couple of different companies. I, I think that the hauling community is at a point now where they, to be quite candid, take this more seriously. I think, you know, 1980, 1986 recycling started, you know, 19, you know, before 1986, you know, and you look at the history of companies, I mean, covered wagon, you know, wasn't that far off? And the types of people involved, you know, we didn't have a lot of sophistication in our business. And, you know, recycling started to happen and we had to get sophistication. Costs got more expensive. We got sophistication on the cost side and, and charging and all these other things. I think we've gained some sophistication. We're, we're now part of the taxing world. I mean, I, I ship, I, I ship off 250,000 a month. And I'm not trying to beat up on government. I'm just saying that's a complication in our, in our system that we had to deal with, that we hadn't dealt with before. And, and there's haulers who were able to do that and haulers who weren't. So I think we're more sophisticated than we were before. This, this organized collection thing is the term that's used. I think we're, we're better understanding why people are looking for that. And I think in general, as an organization, as a, as a trade association, as the metropolitan haulers, we're ready to do more. But we don't obviously want to be, have things that limit the amount of growth that we can have, especially as small businesses.
If I might.
Sure.
You are involved in an organization, correct, of haulers?
Yes, the, the trade association, correct.
That's what I thought it was, okay. And what's, what's your goal in this association? I mean, what do you, what's the common bond among all of you?
To, to, to manage changes in government. It's that we don't have a manifesto that says we want government out of our business or anything like that. But we're no different than any other business. We have a trade association that deals with changes that happen from a regulation perspective. And, and I think, again, I apologize because I'm going to promote us. We are fairly well organized in the sense that as a group, we can get our group together, which I think is a good thing if we're truly going to be working collaboratively. There have been times over the years, and, and it happens, it goes and flows, where haulers don't get along and then people like you who want to try to get something done, can't get it done.
Okay, I just want to do a little bit of what I call vocabulary clarification. I don't even like the term rate regulation floating around the room because I don't see that as the only goal, and in my particular case, primary goal of what we're after here anyway. It's more cost containment and that's different than rate regulation. And the other thing is, you were referring to us as having the bully pulpit and I would disagree. Most of the time, people come in here and bully us. But anyway. And I don't know what the difference is between quote bully pulpit on this part of government and mass mailings from individuals in your industry that say, move, quick, the sky is falling, they're going to get you. I think everybody has their own, shall I say, platform. My goal isn't about bullying anything. My goal, as I think of my colleagues', is, is to try and get the best service for this community, still follow our environmental obligations and see if we can get some kind of a cost containment movement going on here for all of our residents. That's the only reason. So, and the reason I bring it up is because I really don't like the term. And unless I get to say, well, then to other members of your industry, knock off your ridiculous mass mailings, I don't like to talk about that. And I really wish no one were referred to this as rate regulation, although I know people in the industry want to, but that's not the goal here, in my estimation.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have had this conversation ad nauseam. I kid you not, I kid you not, I had a.
Try since 1980.
No, 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 I get it, I get it, I get it. But I, I think the thing that we're trying to understand is the philosophical, you said, this is a philosophical, philosophical conversation. And, and you're correct in some regards, in, in my estimation. I think one of the things that you also said was that it is about protecting against governmental regulations and about responding to sort of the, the impact that has on the organization or individual haulers. And I think one of the things that I, I'm confused about is if you were approached by a five or six block neighborhood that said, you know, we've all kind of come together, give us your best rate. We're all going to go with the same one. We think this is a great thing. It's going to be better for everybody. You and everybody in the organization would say, well, heck, that saves us. Gets, you know, you could go down the list, right? There's a benefit to that. And why there would be such opposition to that? I don't understand why if there is, would be a financial savings to the individual hauler by having a segment or a portion or all of a city by volume, that there wouldn't be a cost savings that, you know, that, and quite frankly, the answer is, well, it means less profit. And that doesn't mean I can't charge them what they want and what they, what they are willing to pay and what they don't know they're paying. So it's kind of a free market, to your point, right? So what I'm confused about is, why wouldn't you? Really, why wouldn't you? Besides the big government argument, besides stay out of my life, be freedom of choice, free, why wouldn't you? I mean, it's going to be cheaper for you to have a portion, right? And you can buy volume, get more customers and be easier to manage. I mean, help me with that. Why in the heck wouldn't you? Take a portion.
Councilmember Linus, that's what we do. We're working every day with, our company's been working since 1955 to increase our market share. And we work to fill in the gaps, okay? We're not always successful, but we work to fill in the gaps. You know, there are some parts of Maple, and I don't know Maplewood that well, but I suspect there are some parts of Maplewood where there's multiple haulers on the street. There are probably other parts of Maplewood where there isn't because a hauler has done a good job of, of managing his rates. And I, and I don't necessarily think it's because those residents got together and told him that. It just happened that way because he's done a good job of delivering value. So in my opinion, we do that. We're always working to increase market share. And eventually, you know, if you don't, you're going to be out of business. I mean, if, if I came into Maplewood and tried to service the whole city and I, I'm in Maplewood for 10 years and, and I serviced the whole city and I've got 500 stops, I'm not going to make it. So I'm going to have to make a decision to get out of that market. Now, during that time, I may try to have competitive pricing, introductory rates to try to build some market share because if I can build market share, I can provide a better price. And I, and so that's what we do as, as, and, and I think that's what most businesses do.
So then, why, okay, if I understand your logic, and I, and I do understand that you're trying to grow market share, that's the general course of your business, right? If, if there was such opposition to organized trash hauling that is on the table that we've had for the last year, right? Or, as Kathy's points, several years. And then why would individual haulers choose to respond to the RFP at all? I mean, wouldn't a logical response to that be like, well, screw it, we're not going to do it, right?
Well, and I apologize, I didn't finish. And, and in, I think, all of the scenarios, when the government gets involved, there's limits on my ability to grow market share. Whether it's because it's in bigger chunks now, let's take the metro area, it's in bigger chunks now, so that could be harder depending on the hauler. So.